Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for October 29th, 2018. Call upon Councilmember Nancy Ford. And frankly, as we're talking about the moment of reflection tonight, I really want to have folks think about the horrible, horrible thing that happened in Pittsburgh. I think it's just so tragic. I've got a son who is actually the executive director at a local synagogue here in the Denver metropolitan area, so I just, it just gets you to your core. So with that.
So please join me in a moment of silent reflection. And if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kristin Rush?
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protim Marriott.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember David Jones and Mayor Protim John Marriott.
Yes, we have a motion. All votes are cast. Passes five to zero. Thanks. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. Looks like you all had a good meeting while I was out of the country, so are there any changes or corrections to the minutes of October 15th, 2018?
Oh, Mayor, I would just like to add the Trinity to the Trinity Presbyterian Church under 11B.
Okay. Did you get that, Kristin? Very good. With that change, the minutes shall stand approved as presented. Next, we have a recognition. Is Alex here? Alex, come on down. And we'll call upon Councilmember Bob Pfeiffer.
Yes. Tonight, City Council recognizes Alex Vin Long of Troop 2003 for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank a Boy Scout can attain. Only 6% ever earn this honor. For his Eagle project, Alex worked on fire mitigation for the sheds at the Arvada Covenant Church. He solicited the help of volunteers, friends and family, procured donations of supply, tools and food, and managed the project. In the end, the church shed had 10 feet of defensible fire space around them. Alex attends Rosson Valley High School and after graduation plans to attend college. I also have here a certificate of recognition presented to Alex Vin Long, awarded in recognition of your hard work, dedication and enthusiasm in achieving the high honor of rank of Eagle Scout, presented on the 19th day, it's actually not 19, today is the 29th day of October 2018, signed by Mayor Williams and the rest of council. So I'll come down here and give you your recognition.
Mom, if you want to come down and get a picture down here, feel free. Now, you know you're required to give us a three-hour speech now, okay?
Congratulations.
My path to becoming an Eagle Scout started when I was in first grade as a Cub Scout. Thank you to my mom, dad, Troop 2003 Scouts and later for their support throughout my Eagle Scout journey. I would also like to say thank you to the City of Arvada for presenting my Eagle rank recognition tonight. I appreciate it very much.
I think it's great that we have the opportunity to represent, to recognize both our young men and women who achieve awards such as these. It gives you some faith that things aren't going to be that bad in our, in our country, in our world. Do we have anybody who wishes to address City Council during public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion. We'll move on to new business. We have some items on the consent agenda. The first is R-18106, a resolution adopting the amended permits fee schedule for right-of-way work permits pursuant to Chapter 78, Public Improvement to the Arvada City Code, and the amended administrative fee schedule for building safety division permits and service pursuant to Chapter 18 of the Building and Building Recognizations of the Arvada City Code. Next, we have R-18107, a resolution authorizing a change order, number two, to a construction contract between Arvada and Triple M Construction in the amount of approximately 300, or $851,000 for the 2018 concrete replacement project. Next item is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and Powers Brown Architecture for Architectural Design Services for the new Parks Fleet Building in an amount not to exceed approximately $413,000. Ms. Ford?
I'd like to make a motion.
You may.
I move that consent items, numbers R-18-106 through R-18-108 be approved.
motions for approval? Now you can vote. All votes are cast. That passes five to zero. Thank you. Next, we have some resolutions. Mr. Devon, first, we have 18446, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by, for public improvements for the Candelas Commercial Filing Number One between Arvada and Jefferson Center Metropolitan District Number One.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this, this resolution will authorize an intergovernmental agreement so that, with JCMD, so that we can get some public improvements completed as part of a commercial retail center development located in the northwest, located northwest of Indiana Street and Candelas Parkway. These public improvements will include construction of public streets, water lines, mains, sewer lines and mains, drainage facilities and public landscaping within an adjacent property. All of the public improvements will be constructed according to city standards. The city will immediately, upon acceptance of the improvements, take care of the streets. The district will be responsible for some of the other improvements, including retaining walls and fencing within the property. And also some trails as outlined in a, in our governmental agreement with our park maintenance, for our park maintenance. Staffs recommending approval of the resolution. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Mayor, members of council, I just want to do a quick recognition on these three resolutions, beginning with 109 through 111. Assistant City Attorney Emily Grog came in and worked on these particular agreements with, with the legal counsel from JCMD and did an extraordinary job, kind of at a last-second sort of approach, so I wanted to recognize her tonight. She did a wonderful job getting these on the agenda for tonight.
Was Muncy Ayers the attorney for the?
No, he wasn't.
Okay.
It was Megan Becker.
Okay. So I made it a little bit easier.
I have no comment, Mayor.
Question or action from council? Mr. McGough.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions. And first of all, taking a look at the background paragraph on the, the staff page there, it says, "The district shall be responsible for the retaining walls and fencing within Block Two in perpetuity." In contrast, the paragraph itself in the contract, it doesn't seem to have the same affirmative obligation because what it says there in the last sentence of 1.7, this, "At no time shall the city be required to maintain the Big Dry Creek retaining walls." So it seems like in the staff document, it imposes an affirmative obligation for the taking care of the retaining walls, whereas the, the contract itself, it doesn't seem to say that, that there's an affirmative obligation for taking care of them. It just says, "The city's not going to do it at any time." So I'm just wondering about the difference in that, in the, in the language and what might be required.
The, there was a meeting with JCMD attorneys and it was just decided that that was the language with the understanding that they are responsible for that. I agree that the language was not as strong and would have probably appreciated that kind of thought when I, when we first drafted it. It was kind of a compromise that we went through. There were certain sections that had gotten a little confusing between JCMD I versus JCMD II and what was responsibilities versus I and II. They were in full agreement, though, that the city is not responsible, that these are responsibilities of both JCMI and in some, some cases, JCMD II, to maintain these. And there wasn't any concern on our part that they weren't in agreement with that.
Okay. I'm just wondering, perhaps going forward, there might be some kind of, you know, communication that indicates that they do in fact have that affirmative obligation to maintain those retaining walls. Because what I'm thinking about is not tomorrow or five years from now, but many years from now, that I wish the language were stronger there.
I'll tell you what, we'll follow, we'll follow up with those comments, Councilmember McGough, and make sure that we make that communication to JCMD.
Okay. I have one other question, too, on that. It indicates the district shall be responsible for maintenance of the trail as outlined in the IGA for park maintenance through the financing termination date. And of course, that's the time at which they turn it over to the city and then it becomes a city obligation. But I'm just wondering, when, what's expected? What's the financing termination date? Is that in the distant future, that those trails will become ours or do we know the termination date?
I apologize. I do not have that date in front of me.
Is that the end of the urban renewal period?
Okay. It's good until 2028, so it's actually 10 years down the road.
Okay. So the financing termination date, but I'm assuming that, see, they're, they're responsible for the maintenance of the trail as outlined through that termination date, so for the next 10 years.
Right.
That will be theirs.
Yes. That's right.
Then it turns over to us.
Because that's the end of the, that's the end of the financing for that urban renewal district area.
Okay. Got it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that Resolution 18-109, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for public improvements for the Candelas Commercial Filing Number One between the City of Arvada, Colorado and Jefferson Center Metropolitan District Number One be approved.
motions for approval? All votes are cast. That passes five to zero with Mr. Marriott and Mr. Jones being approved absences. Next, we have R-18110, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for public improvements for the Candelas Commercial Filing Number Two between the City of Arvada, Colorado and Jefferson Center Metropolitan District Number One. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is very similar to the agreement you just approved. Once again, this is for constructing public improvements to serve eight lots on, for an office and commercial retail center located northeast of Candelas Parkway and State Highway 72. Again, this will include construction of public streets, water lines and mains, sewer lines and mains, drainage facilities, public landscaping. All the public improvements will be constructed by the district within public rights way in a manner that meets city districts. There's also going to be a regional detention pond in Track A and store of water facilities shall be also constructed and maintained in perpetuity by the district. Again, staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Okay. Questions or action by council? Mr. McGough.
Yeah. Again, I would ask that the, there be a follow-up communication stating the affirmative obligation of the district to maintain that detention pond.
We'll do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Do I have a motion? Mr. McGough.
Yes, I move that R-18-110, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for public improvements for the Candelas Commercial Filing Number Two between the City of Arvada, Colorado and Jefferson Center Metropolitan District Number One be approved.
motions for approval? All votes are cast. That passes five to zero with Mr. Marriott and Mr. Jones being approved absence. Next, we have R-18111, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for public improvements for the Candelas Commercial Filing Number Three between the City of Arvada, Colorado and Jefferson Center Metropolitan District Number One. Mr. Devon?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I am tempted to say ditto. This is again, an IGA for the construction of public improvements according to city standards for the commercial office and commercial retail center on northeast of Candelas Parkway and West 91st Place. Again, the same kinds of facilities are being constructed in this particular case as well.
So one, one just supplemental note, just so council's aware of this, typically, these, these items that you're acting on tonight would be done via a development agreement that would not be brought, you know, to council at a council meeting, but because we're dealing with a separate governmental entity in JCMD, that's why they are brought to you in this form of an IGA. But they're essentially development agreements, just so that you're aware of that.
That makes sense. Very good. Questions? Mr. McGough?
And echoing Mr. Devon, I will say ditto of my comments on the first two matters.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Do I have a motion? Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes, I move that Resolution 18-111, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for public improvements for the Candelas Commercial Filing Number Three between the City of Arvada, Colorado and Jefferson Center Metropolitan District Number One be approved.
motions for approval? All votes are cast. That passes five to zero with Mr. Marriott and Mr. Jones being an approved absence. It's not quite 6:30, so we can't go into our public hearings yet. I'll jump down to reports from City Council. Are there any City Council reports? Mr. McGough?
Yes, I'll make mention, the, I do serve on the, as the council's representative, the city's representative to the Rocky Flats Stewardship Council. That council meets five times a year for half a day each time. Today was the, the day that we, we met. I just want to officially apprise the City Council of actions taken by the Stewardship Council today. And in particular, that Arvada resident, Kim Griffiths, who lives in the Candelas area, was re-elected to a one-year term as a citizen member of the board. And the Rocky Flats Cold War Museum, which is headquartered here in Arvada, was elected to serve on the board as a, as an organization so that there will be one of three representatives of that organization who will represent their interests and provide historical perspective to the council. And that's, would be Murph Widowfield is the, will be the primary attendee. So going forward, the City of Arvada is well represented on the Rocky Flats Stewardship Council. Thank you.
Very good. Other reports? We've got seven more minutes or, no.
No.
12, 11, 11 minutes. You know, I've still got jet lag going, gang, so.
Yeah. Mayor, I'll just, Halloween, a lot of kids on the road, it's dark, and just for everyone to be safe and watch out for little kiddos that are out there running around the neighborhoods and everyone be safe and drive slowly. Sorry I didn't burn through 12 minutes.
No, but particularly with Halloween coming up on Wednesday night, it's, it is very important that folks be careful out there. We want to make sure our kiddos are safe while they're trick-or-treating. Hopefully, the snow is going to hit in the morning and it will clear up by tomorrow night. Of course, there's the running joke that you know you're from Colorado when you always wear a winter coat over your Halloween costume. So that's sort of the nature, Mr. Devon doesn't know that from his California days, but that's sort of the, the way it is here in Colorado. So I've got one minor thing. The Arvada Steubens is going to be featured on the Food Network on Guy Fieri's newest show, Triple D Nation. And it's going to be, I believe, November the 2nd, and featuring Steubens in Arvada, and so that's great, great restaurant, and glad they're getting some national recognition. Mr. Devon, what do you have for us?
We will have a workshop. Actually, our next meeting is a council business meeting, or we will have a workshop on November the 12th, which will be our next Land Development Code update, which will be Module Two. I know that, I think Bob and Nancy are, are the council representatives to the Land Development Code update process, so I'm sure they will be able to add some perspective from the council's viewpoint during that workshop. And I believe the Planning Commission will be there as well. So that's our workshop on November the 12th. And then on, on November 26th, our workshop will focus on Arvada events and Arvada Center Operations Plan. And then our presentation on visioning and strategic planning, which is our Speak Up Arvada initiative, will also be summarized on November 26th. We're also working on, and I think this was mentioned recently in communications we've sent to you, on a opportunity for council to participate in a public workshop that will summarize the results of the whole Speak Up Arvada engagement process, which will schedule sometime after the November 26th workshop, but before the council retreat on January
Mr. Daley, do you have anything for us?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Miller, for your calendar, we have scheduled on Tuesday, well, because we talked about it while you weren't able to be with us, on Tuesday, November 27th at 4 o'clock, we're planning on doing interviews for the Planning Commission. We've had a Planning Commission vacancy come up. Where, Kristin Rush, when are we going to get the notice out and when are applications going to be due?
The notice is going out tomorrow and the applications will be due on November 12th at noon.
Okay. So people will have until November 12th to apply for our Planning Commission, a crucially important board for, for the city. It's, the Planning Commission gives City Council recommendations and guidance. The applicants and citizens get sort of a first run-through of any development project that's coming forward in the city. And a lot of the issues get worked out through discussions at the Planning Commission level. So it's an important position. I would urge Arvada citizens who are interested to look into it. They meet typically twice a month, twice a month on Wednesdays, Tuesdays, second, first and third Tuesday? First and third Tuesday. And it's certainly a time commitment and it's, it's an important board for us, so people will be watching for that, notice of that opportunity. And those who are interested, I would urge them to, to apply. Any member of the public that would like to address City Council? Now that, we've got a few more minutes here and, any need? No one's jumping forward. Well, come on down. It's open mic night at the Arvada City Council.
Come on.
Hi, Rachel, how are you?
Good. How are you guys?
I'm tired.
Yeah. So my name's Rachel Smallwood. I live at 6108 Route to Court, 8004. I might as well talk about organized trash and recycling since we've got some spare time. I'd like to actually just like, I know you guys are going to have a workshop in December about it, so I would just like to fast forward and pretend we're at a place where you guys are all on board and you think it's a great idea, like, for all the, all the numerous reasons that it is a great idea. And so you're starting to think about like how you want to go about that process, how you're going to choose a hauler, and you've got the whole, the opposition saying that, you know, what about jobs? And I would encourage you to try as much as you can to make it not just all of the many, many reasons why people say it's a good thing, but add another reason why it's a good thing and make it a pro-jobs issue. I don't, I haven't done any research into whether you could do this or not. That's why I was going to not say this yet, but I'm just going to plant the seed anyway. Maybe you could say, hey, trash hauler X, we would like to give you the bid to our city, but we would like you to prioritize hiring Arvadans first to do the Arvada routes. So you're making sure that the jobs stay in Arvada and that they're good-paying jobs. I don't know if you could make it part of the contract to say, hey, we would like to see how much you pay your employees, what your benefits packages are, and make that part of the, part of the weighing-in factor of who you would choose based on how they treat their employees. And hey, if you could find one that where their employees were unioned, that would be awesome. And so that way, if you could, if you could factor in all of those things and you could say, hey, it's going to be great for our streets, it's going to be great for costs, it's going to be great for recycling, great for our air quality, and great for jobs. And henceforth, good for traffic, that many people working, getting jobs that stay in Arvada, won't have to travel outside of Arvada to go to work. So, you know, win, 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 win. Thanks.
Thanks, Rachel.
Can you hear me okay? Do I have to stoop like this?
Or you can bid it up.
I'll just do that. So I'm here today to ask about affordable. Oh, hi, I'm Lee Carroll. I live two blocks over there in 8004. Thank you for having me. Is there anything else I need to say before I, I start asking questions? Great. Do we have an affordable housing plan here in Arvada, given the 40% increase in housing costs for single bedrooms in the metro area over the last four years? What do we have for, to address this problem in Arvada? And I would just like to ask, after having looked on our website for the city, if there is maybe a plan out there that I hadn't seen that addresses reducing rents, making Arvada more affordable, increasing the number of people who can, you know, who actually can live here and thereby boost our economy. So let me ask that question to you all, maybe starting with you, Mayor.
Perhaps you haven't been here before. We don't answer questions during public comment.
Oh.
Public comment is your opportunity to make comments. You can raise questions and staff will get back to you with regard to, you know, responses, okay? So that, that's how public comment works.
Oh, okay. Thank you for the education.
You bet.
All right.
So if you want to provide your address to staff.
Sure.
Then we can be back in contact with you.
The staff will be in contact with me about affordable housing? Okay, great. Well, let me wrap up my regard, remarks by saying I would be one of many Arvada residents who would like to see an increased focus on affordable housing, not only building new units, but also relaxing whatever rules or zoning regulations are in effect right now that reduce the number of people who can live per unit. So opening up their rental opportunities for people who live in Arvada. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will comment that indeed, this is an issue that City Council is looking at and as is our Urban Renewal Board, so, so it's on our radar. Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and we'll sit here for a minute and 18 seconds, 17 seconds, and then we'll convene, we'll have a stretch in place. Very good.
Watch what happens.
Do you want to make a better? Yeah, I want to make it better. Yeah. I can.
What is the better one?
Okay, it's now 6:30 and pursuant to our bills, we can open our public hearing. Uh, first bill, open the public hearing on Council Bill 18039 and ordinance amending section 102-206 of chapter 102 utilities of the Arvada City Code pertaining to wastewater user rates. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is one of eight actions that you will be considering tonight in association with our 2019-2020 budget. I wanted to just briefly remind the council and the community that we started deliberations on the 2019-2020 budget back in late July when we presented tenure financial plans. And then you also received two workshops, one in late September and one at the beginning of this month, October, wherein departments presented major issues and major requests, major initiatives and so forth regarding their operating budgets for 2019-2020. In on September the 7th, the proposed budget was released to the community and to the city council. And in that document, we outlined our expenditures of priorities, expenditure priorities associated with about $235 million worth of expenditure requests. So bringing it up to tonight, the council bill 18-039, that's before you tonight, has to do with our utilities code pertaining to wastewater user rates. We are proposing a 3% increase for wastewater user rates for 2019. We talked about in the wastewater tenure financial plan, the rationale behind the 3% rate, which is that we need to accumulate some money for capital improvements, but we're also, we'll also be seeing some reduction on some cost associated with rehabilitation of deteriorated sections of our wastewater, of our wastewater lines. So we believe the 3% reduction is justified in that it kind of helps us to smooth out our rates rather than have them kind of go up and down over the course of the tenure financial plan. And we outlined the operational budget that's associated with the request and we're recommending approval of the ordinance. And if you have any questions, we have, we'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, let me open it up for the public. Any member of the public wish to address city council on Council Bill 18039? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council questions or action. Mr. Fiver?
I move that Council Bill 18-039 and ordinance amending section 102-206 of chapter 102 utilities of the Arvada City Code pertaining to wastewater user rates be approved on final reading, number 4656, and ordered published by title only.
Okay. Motion for approval for a 3% increase, correct? Yes, 3% increase. All votes are cast. That passes five to zero with Mr., now I've got, now I'm really messed up, with Mr. Marriott and Mr. Jones being absent. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 18040 and ordinance amending various sections of chapter 102 utilities of the Arvada City Code pertaining to water user rates. Mr. Devon?
Yes, this is, this proposed action addresses the water user rates. This would be a 3.4% increase. Again, we provided you with some analysis during the workshop, I think on October the 8th, wherein our utilities director presented the rationale associated with the 3.4% increase. We have, again, major capital projects forecasted with the, throughout the tenure plan, but we also are going to be reducing some operational expenditures associated with the water system in the very near future, which again led to the recommendation to kind of smooth out the rates. I would call your attention to the fact that we tend to be in the lower third of water user rates compared to adjacent agencies and as a result of our very prudent management of the Water Operations Fund, and we're recommending approval of the ordinance as presented.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council questions or action. Ms. Ford?
I just had one question and then if no one else has a question, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
That'll be fine.
Jim, I just wanted to ask you, as I was looking at the, you know, I looked at these before, but just staring at them right now, again, looking at the differences in charges, you know, like for example, just comparing Arvada to Golden, there's about a $200 difference. What are the variables that affect water rates? And why, why would there be a major disparity between different communities in water rates?
Okay. So the major components there are your water supply. Ours is with, majority of it's with Denver Water, which is a set rate. Other communities may have a lot of expenses in managing their water supplies, maintaining their reservoirs and such, if they're, particularly if it's an older system. You get into your treatment costs, again, a, we have a fairly modernized plant. Others may not be quite so modernized, may have to spend more money on that. Most of our system is a gravity flow. The water comes in and then we gravity flow down to everybody. We don't really have to pump it. A lot of other places, you mentioned Golden, they're really taking out of Clear Creek and they're having to pump the water to most of their city. So that is an expensive cost that can add to the cost of water. And then you have your distribution system. How much money do you need to spend, not only in the operations, but also in replacing the infrastructure? We started replacing our infrastructure about two decades ago. We were slow and methodical. Had we let it go too long, you would have had to really condense that replacement period and it would cost a whole bunch more money at that time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You can make the motion.
All right, thank you. I move that CB 18-040 and ordinance amending various sections of chapter 102 utilities of the Arvada City Code pertaining to water, excuse me, water users' rates be approved on final reading numbered 4657 and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes five to zero with Mr. Marriott and Mr. Jones being absent. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 18041 and ordinance repealing and reenacting section 74-31 land use fees of Article II Community Development Department Service Fees of Chapter 74 Planning and Development of the Arvada City Code. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is an action related to staff's diligent work on updating land use fees and bringing our land use fees up to a level that is comparable to other cities. Our staff spent significant research and analysis of development-related fees over the last several months. As a result of this work, land use fees that are collected by our newly formed Growth and Economic Development Department are being proposed for approval to balance the hourly or per-sheet cost to provide review services and be reasonable based on what's collected in the majority of our surrounding jurisdictions. This would result in an approximate $311,000 increase in total development fees per year. That will help offset our development costs and make us, I think, somewhat comparable with the surrounding jurisdictions. We've illustrated some comparisons within the staff report. As an example, our fees would be generally in line with those charged by the neighboring city of Wheat Ridge, Aurora, which charges to be 100% fee recoverable. Our fees would be somewhere between 33% to 66% less. Overall, our fees are recommended to go up between 40% and 150% depending on the size of the project. In some cases, our smaller projects would generally have a reduced fee and larger projects would have a increased fee. So we've also notified developers and contractors of this action that is occurring tonight and we are recommending approval of the ordinance as proposed.
Very good. Any member of the public like to address city council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council question or action. Mr. McGough?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Devon. It's my understanding that the primary driver of the rates is the amount of staff time involved rather than just making it comparable with other cities. So we do become more comparable, but the main driver is the actual time spent on the development documents. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion. Mr. McGough?
Okay, I'll go ahead with the motion. I move that Council Bill 18-041 and ordinance repealing and reenacting section 74-31 land use fees of Article II Community Development Department Service Fees of Chapter 74 Planning and Development of the Arvada City Code be approved on final reading numbered 4658 and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes five to zero with Mr. Marriott and Mr. Jones being absent. Next, we have Council Bill 18042 and ordinance certifying the city of Arvada mill levy for 2018 for the Board of County Commissioners for the Jefferson and Adams Counties. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this action, as proposed, would set our mill levy at 4.31, which is the same as it was in the current year. And it would enable us to collect over $6.6 million in budget estimates for property tax. We're recommending approval of the, of the ordinance.
Great. And this is done without any increase in the mill levy, correct? Okay, any member of the public like to address city council at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council question or action. I've got three council members who have voted, but I need a motion. You can make a motion. On the wrong page.
I need to make the motion. Go ahead. Is it on 42? That's what we're doing it on?
This is on 42, yes.
I'll move that Council Bill 18-042 and ordinance certifying the city of Arvada mill levy for 2018 for the Board of County Commissioners for Jefferson and Adams County be approved on final reading numbered 4659 and ordered published by title only.
Okay, motions for approval of the, submittal of the mill levies, certifying the mill levy, there's no increase in our mill levy. That passes five to zero. Thank you. Okay, next we have Council Bill 18043 and ordinance appropriating funds for the fiscal year 2019. At the same time, we'll be considering 2018 466, which is Resolution 18112, a resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year 2019, Resolution 18113, a resolution adopting the 2019 Capital Improvement Fund budget and allocating the specific, for specific projects in 2019, and R 18114, a resolution adopting the pay plan for fiscal year 2019. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, all of these actions will allow expenditure authority for the 2019-2020 budget as proposed in the amount of 235, 262, 545, as set forth in the proposed operating, biannual operating budget. And based on all the work that has gone into this document, the discussions that we've had with city council over the three workshops that I referenced earlier, the hard work by our finance department, their development of tenure financial plans and projections that show that we can afford to maintain the commitments that we're making in the 2019-2020 budget for the next 10 years. We are recommending approval of the ordinance as stated and all the resolutions that you listed as part of this discussion.
Very good. Open it up for public comment. Any member of the public wish to address city council at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council questions or action. Ms. Miller?
I can make a motion if we don't have any questions.
You bet.
Pick the hardest one. That's all right, I got this. I move that Council Bill 18-043 and ordinance appropriating funds for the fiscal year 2019 be approved on final reading numbered 4660 and ordered published by title only.
Very good. Motion for approving and appropriating the funds for fiscal year 2019. Ms. Miller's vote is in. All votes are cast. That passes five to zero with Mr. Marriott and Mr. Jones being absent. You wish to proceed on the other ones?
Absolutely, we're on a roll.
Very good.
I move that R 18-112, a resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year 2019 be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast, pass five to zero, Mr. Marriott and Mr. Jones being absent. So the budget's been adopted. Next, the resolution for the Capital Improvement Fund.
I move that R 18-113, a resolution adopting the 2019 Capital Improvement Fund budget and allocating for special, or specific projects in 2019 be approved.
Okay, all votes are cast. That passes five to zero, Mr. Marriott and Mr. Jones being absent. So the budget's been adopted. Next, the resolution for the Capital Improvement Fund.
I move that R 18-113, a resolution adopting the 2019 Capital Improvement Fund budget and allocating for special, or specific projects in 2019 be approved.
Okay, all votes are cast. That passes five to zero, Mr. Marriott and Mr. Jones being absent. So the, we've approved our Capital Improvement Fund budget and allocated for specific projects in 19. The last one, Ms. Miller.
And last but certainly not least, Ms. Haley, I move that R 18-114, a resolution adopting the pay plan for fiscal year 2019 be approved.
And again, we've had specific workshops, prior meetings to go over all this in great detail. We've invited the public to be present at all those discussions. And so I think the council's been well-served by staff in providing us information to make all of these decisions tonight. With that, that motion passes five to zero with Mr. Marriott and Mr. Jones being approved absences. We've already covered everything else in our agenda, so we stand adjourned.